Okay. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. And it really is afternoon. It's still amazing. Uh, this meeting of the City University of New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order. Uh, I'm gonna ask you, mute your cell phones. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on cable channel seventy-five. This meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream and the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Uh, I'd like to move that this meeting convene in executive session pursuant to Article seven, section one oh five of the Public Officers Law to discuss matters pertaining to personnel investigations and litigation. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. The board will reconvene in public session following this, following this executive session. We are in executive session. Not supposed to be here? We're gonna, uh...
Alberto. Please turn on my family. Wait, if you just think of me, wait for me there. It seems like, but he controls...
Okay, everyone. Uh, we are back in public session right now. Uh, good evening. The Board of Trustees scheduled a public hearing on February sixth, twenty twenty-three on items related to our agenda today, and no speakers signed up to speak, so the hearing was canceled. One speaker did submit written testimony, which was shared with the Board of Trustees and the Chancellery. As always, the written testimony has been posted to the, to our website. Trustees have been busy with presidential searches over the last few weeks with the launch of the searches for the College of Staten Island and the School of Professional Studies. Trustees will also be busy as we are also preparing to begin a search for the next president of Hunter College. And again, to all of my colleagues, thank you so much. Thank you for your involvement. It is something that doesn't get a lot of attention from the public, but the, all the hours that you all spend in searching for our leaders, our presidents, is so appreciated, and it really does continue to shape the future of CUNY. So, thank you all. Thank you all so much. Uh, Her Majesty Queen Diambi Muata of the Democratic Republic of Congo, a CUNY alum and, and I would say who's probably, Sandra is like, you guys are like best friends these days. Uh, our vice chair, they are, have known each other for an extended period of time. But she recently returned to CUNY touring three campuses, meeting members of the university community, and discussing her extensive advocacy work to benefit people in Africa. And it'll be, she will be featured in an upcoming documentary, documentary series directed by Jada Pinkett Smith to be at on Netflix starting today? Starting today. I'm delighted to announce that we are joined today by several music students who will be performing for us. First, we have from the City College of New York, Kyra Luke, uh, pursuing a bachelor in jazz studies and, in voice. Uh, Matthew Roker Lynn is on the guitar, uh, pursuing a bachelor of music in jazz studies. Daniel Nagel, bass, who's performing, who's pursuing a master of music in jazz studies. And they'll be, they'll be performing George and Ira Gershwin's "Old Lady Be Good." This is, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, you switched it up.
Okay. So instead, we are starting with... Thank you for letting me get all the way through that. From Queens College, from Queens College Duncan Henry, uh, who's pursuing a certificate of advanced study in bassoon performance on the bassoon, performing a J.S. Bach prelude from Cello Suite Number Two, transcribed for the bassoon. I do too.
Hello, everyone. My name is Duncan. And yeah, I'm very excited to perform some Bach for you all today. I was privileged to take part in the Bach competition, uh, at St. Aaron's Crookin School, which I was fortunate enough to win. And I'm very excited to share a little bit of Bach with you and help kickstart the rest of the day.
And thank you for being with us. Thank you. And now to the already introduced Kyra Luke, Matthew Roker Lynn, and Daniel Nagel.
Great, thank you. Um, my name is Kyra Luke. Um, I am a senior jazz voice performance major at City College. Um, I think one thing that I think all three of us can definitely say is a great thing about CUNY and especially our program is that we really draw students from all over the world. For example, Daniel is here studying jazz. He is from Germany and just most, I've noticed most of our program, especially in terms of graduate students, there are international students that will come from all over the world to be able to study and receive a conservatory quality education, which is at an affordable price. And here in New York City, which is the heart of jazz in this country, it's, when people think of music in New York City, a lot of times we think of, we think of jazz and we think of Harlem, which I think all of us definitely feel very lucky to be able to study every single day in a place that's very special to what we're studying individually. One, two, one, two, three.
I'll tell you I'm just a lonesome babe in this wood. So, lady, be good to me.
Thank you all so much. You have, you've made my day. I think I, you've made everyone's day. Again, another round of applause for our students. Thank you. With that, good luck in following. Go to the chancellor. Off to the chancellor. There we go.
I'll do some, some Latin beat and hopefully, uh, but... Thank you, I think. Chair Thompson and trustees and presidents, vice chancellor. I'm happy to welcome all of you to our first meeting of the spring twenty twenty-three semester. I have, uh, lots of good news to share with you about the important work that we're doing in the university. I do have to begin on a, on a sad note. Um, I would ask that we offer condolences to the family and the friends of Kimberly Frick, uh, twenty fourteen graduate of City College who lost her life this month in the earthquakes that devastated Turkey and Syria. Kimberly was visiting her husband's family in Elbistan, Turkey. The earthquake also claimed Kimberly's husband, two young sons, and mother-in-law. So, we also know that there are many faculty and staff, students and alumni who've been directly touched by this natural disaster. As a university community, we will do all we can to support you in this time of overwhelming uncertainty and grief. And I urge all of us here to do what we can to show kindness and compassion for those in need. We're also deeply saddened by Monday shootings at Michigan State University. Uh, we do not expect or accept this kind of tragic senseless violence anywhere in our lives, much less on our college campuses. And our hearts go to the loved ones of those lost and to those who were injured and now are struggling to recover. Let me now move to, um, more positive news. Uh, first, we opened this semester with a wonderful announcement about CUNY Reconnect, our initiative to reengage thousands of New Yorkers who began college but stopped out before they completed a degree. And I'm happy to report that more than sixteen thousand students have signed up for classes academic year through CUNY Reconnect, surpassing our goal of enrolling ten thousand students with the program. Hudos to Vice Chancellor Juanes Armento and our team for the success, uh, of this initiative that we hope we continue to build upon it. I also want to salute our college and career bridge for all peer counseling program. Our ambassadors, which are students, worked tirelessly over the last several months, helping many new enrolled and re-enrolled students get through the matriculation process. This program received further validation last month with the release of a CUNY study that found that prospective students who participated in our bridge program in the summer of twenty twenty, at the height of the pandemic's first wave, were seven percentage points more likely to matriculate. The most significant impact was on students who are Black and Hispanic and those who live in low-income neighborhoods. This is also another example of the important work we do with our partner, the New York City Public Schools. We share students and are committed to making sure that they enroll in our colleges and thrive. Speaking of programs that are utilizing peer counselors and making a big impact, I am thrilled to share another example, the CUNY College and Career Advising Fellows Program. Earlier this month, I teamed up with school chancellor's bank to highlight another partnership, this CUNY College and Career Advising Fellows Program, which is funded through a five-point-two million grand from Bloomberg Philanthropies. These advising fellows, recent CUNY grads, whose number will grow to forty and have been or will be hired to full-time positions, will support public school students as they graduate high school and navigate the college and career planning process. It's another win-win because the fellows will also benefit from training, experience, and career advancement opportunities. Another win we announced this semester is the completion of our transition away from traditional remediation courses in English and math, a change that has been many years in the making. We have long known that students assigned to traditional remediation have low rates of success for course completion, retention, and graduation, while also burning part of their financial aid. As an alternative, we fully scaled the prerequisite developmental education model, which research links to better academic outcomes overall, including graduation rates. Not only are we replacing an outdated system with a more equitable one, I am also proud to see the ways that our faculty and administration work together to enact these systemic reforms. We are living during a time in which antisemitic attacks are under rise nationally and here in New York City. We refuse to tolerate hate of any kind, which is why we recently launched a university-wide reporting portal for staff and students to report instances of hate speech, violence, discrimination, retaliation, and antisemitism. College presidents and deans will receive standardized reports from the tool, and it will help us identify trends and patterns to refine our response and inform our promotion of diversity, equity, and inclusion. This reporting is just one part of our response. We also recently dispersed six hundred thousand dollars to twenty-four colleges for programs, training, and events that counter antisemitism and other forms of bigotry, discrimination, and hate, and a hundred and fifty thousand to the Central Office for Campus Climate Work. Also, on the all-important topic of workforce development and career success, there was one announcement last month that I do, I do not want to have it go unnoticed. The new technology, technology internship engagement program with CUNY and SUNY was initiated thanks to the advocacy of trustee Robert Mujica. We are excited at this initiative, which offers hands-on tech experience to students in their final year of study. I am thrilled to report that we have more than five hundred applicants for the, for these paid IT internship and employment opportunities with New York State, and we refer a hundred and ninety-two highly qualified applicants, a significant number that we initially committed to recruit. I want to thank associate provost Lauren Anderson and vice chancellor Seth Formoso for the leadership in developing this program. Turning now to something you're hopefully seeing in your commute, and you're seeing in the screens in this room, our large advertisement campaign launched two weeks ago in hundreds of subway cars, platform buses, bus stops, billboards, and the Staten Island Ferry Terminal soon will be in taxi tops. Degrees without the debt highlights CUNY's greatest value proposition, our affordability and quality. We also highlight CUNY's incredible variety and scale, more than two thousand eight hundred world-class majors and programs across twenty-five colleges, a factor that we know to be important to many of our applicants. And we photograph real CUNY students on the streets of our city for this campaign. We are celebrating Black History Month, and tomorrow I will be attending an event that highlights the program funded under BRESI, our Black Race and Ethnic Studies Initiative that was funded with a grant from the Mellon Foundation. I'll be going to, uh, Brooklyn College, where students are working as paid interns with the Flatbush African Burial Ground Coalition. This group is working to preserve a burial site for enslaved Africans that is thought to date to the seventeen hundreds. As students connect their studies in anthropology and sociology to the contemporary struggle for racial and social justice, they do this in the heart of Brooklyn, they would also learn to apply their educational experiences to their own lives. They also will acquire knowledge and skills that will help them to thrive in their chosen fields of study and careers. I also want to congratulate three of our students who are among the national winners of the prestigious Blackstone Launchpad Ideas Competition. There are Queens College graduates Reginald Wills and Sunjae Wu, who work as a team, and current borough of Manhattan Community College student Jesse Duran. These students, three of only five national winners from a pool of two thousand two hundred applicants, win a ten thousand dollar prize to help develop their idea for an innovative new product. With extreme weather events increasing in our prevalence in our city and beyond, we are proud that environmental researchers from Brooklyn College and CUNY's Advanced Science Research Center were on the team that developed and tested FloodNet, a first-ever New York City flood monitoring system. Thanks to a boost in seven point two million in city funding, the number of monitor zones would greatly, greatly increase over the next five years from thirty-one to five hundred. That expansion would include all five boroughs will begin this month. Our men's and women's wheelchair basketball teams, the flagship of CUNY's inclusive and adaptive athletics program, hosted their tournament on January twentieth and twenty-first at Queens College. CUNY is one of only twelve schools nationwide to offer competitive and adaptive sports, and the basketball team, which began playing competitively in twenty nineteen, is the only program of its kind on the eastern seaboard. I had a wonderful time visiting the Metropolitan Museum of Art a couple of weeks back in the company of over four hundred students, faculty, and staff who were given exclusive access to the tour, the first four galleries of the Met. This opportunity was sponsored by CUNY Arts, and we were the first university to have this incredible access to one of our jewels of our city's cultural landscape. On cultural notes, I want to congratulate two CUNY distinguished professors and poets, Kimiko Han from Queens College and Patricia Smith from the College on Staten Island for their election to the Board of the Academy of American Poets. They embody the very best of our world-class faculty, and I'm delighted to see them gain this great recognition. A quick shout-out before I end to Jeff Rotos, our vice chancellor for government affairs, who began his work with us last month and joined us tonight for the first time. Welcome, Jeff. Yep. And it was good to have him this past Monday accompanying senior vice chancellor Glenda Grace and me as we visited and knocked on doors in Albany. This, Mr. Chair, brings me to the end of my report, my first report of twenty twenty-three. Excited for the semester ahead and happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Thank you, chancellor. Thank you so much.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, on the D E I, uh, for the new program to condemn forms of hate, uh, you mentioned other forms of hate. Uh, what are the other forms of hate that are included in this whole initiative?
We, we casted a broad, uh, net, and we allowed the campuses to make decisions on that. Many campuses were building on programs they already had and expanded. They're moving into areas where they felt that they could cover additional grounds. Um, yeah, I can send you a copy of the, uh, sort of guidelines that we sent to the campuses for the proposal, but antisemitism, uh, we highlighted also the rise in hate crimes against Asian Americans. Uh, so, I mean, I can give you, we gave some examples, but we didn't want to be prescriptive. And I can also give you a list of, and I can send it to the board members of the projects that the campuses decided to produce. I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna turn now to items that require a vote. Start item number one, uh, the draft minutes of the special board meeting, executive session on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, and the draft minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. I'd like to move item number one. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All right, let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved. Item, item number two, the Committee on Finance and Administration. Let me call on committee on finance and administration chair Fernando Ferrer to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Committee on Finance Administration considered the following matters at its meeting on January twenty-three. on January 23, 2023, and one item from the Subcommittee on Investments at its November 14, 2022 meeting. Item 2A is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee reflecting selected ECP actions that have been entered by the colleges into the CUNY system of record between October 22, 2022 and December 22, 2022. Lot of 22s here. The report contains a total of 50 ECP actions, including 19 acting appointments, 28 regular appointments, two terminations, and one resignation. Mr. Chairman, I'll move their approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion on the item. Trusty Burger.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote no on this item, mostly to express my concern that there are more than a dozen salary increases within this at a time when discretionary salary increases, when we are facing severe fiscal problems imminently and going into the future. And I'm doing it to mark my territory. I want to make sure that discretionary spending be kept to the absolute minimum as we move forward until we begin to resolve our financial problems.
Other comments?
Yes.
Yes.
On the students' side, we do share the same sentiment that we are a little worried about the salary increases while we face a lot of financial difficulties. So I may abstain from this motion as well.
Any other comments on this item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One. And abstentions? One. All right, that item's approved. Thank you.
Item 2B is a resolution to appoint Gladys.
Schrinmaker.
Schrinmaker. Oh, thank you. As Senior Associate Dean for Academic Affairs and Chief Academic Officer at the School of Labor and Urban Studies, Gladys Schrinmaker has more than 30 years of progressive administrative and leadership experience in higher education and has held positions such as Associate Dean for Academic Affairs, Assistant Vice President, Associate Provost, Executive Director of Campus Effectiveness, and Academic Support and Assistant Provost. Dr. Schrinmaker holds an EDD from Columbia University Teachers College, an MA from the same institution, MS from City College of New York, and a BA from St. John's University. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2B.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Or we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2C is a resolution to appoint Mark Flower as Vice President to Finance Administration and Chief Operating Officer at John Jay College. He has over three decades of leadership, finance, and operations management experience in the manufacturing and education sectors, and has been serving as the college's interim Vice President for Finance Administration and Chief Operating Officer since 2020. He holds an advanced certificate in school business leadership from Long Island University, an MS in Management of Technology from Stony Brook University, and MS in Manufacturing Engineering from Polytechnic University, New York University, and a BA in Chemistry from Drew University. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move item 2C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2D is a resolution to appoint Amadeo DiAngelo as a member of the City University of New York Civil Service Commission, a distinguished administrator who served the city of New York for more than four decades, and he's served seven New York City agency heads and four New York City controllers. He holds a BA and MA in government and politics from St. John's University and has served as a, where he served as assistant professor at the, at its Graduate School of Arts and Science. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move item 2D.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the item? And the only thing I will add to this is I was one of the, I noticed, four controllers who had the opportunity to work with Amadeo, and he is an incredibly knowledgeable and talented person, and we're lucky to have him there. Any other comments, discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2E is a resolution to appoint Derek Brazil as Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at York College. He's served as interim Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs since He received a PhD in molecular and cell biology from the University of California, Berkeley, holds a BS in Biology from Stanford. After a postdoctoral position at Rice University, he became Assistant Professor at Hunter College in 1999 and achieved the rank of tenured professor in 2015. He has a BS in Biology from Stanford University as well. Mr. Chairman, accordingly, I move approval of item 2E.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item, other than how lucky we are to have him? All right, let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, item 2F is a resolution to appoint Karen Williams as Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management at York College. Dr. Williams currently serves as interim Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management at York College, where she provides leadership and direction to ensure student success further into York's strategic plan and to effectively manage resources and services to achieve the mission of the college. She received her EDD in Higher Education Administration concentration from Northeastern University, an EDM in Counseling and Development from George Mason University, a BA in Africana Studies from University of Albany, SUNY. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2F.
May I have a second for the item?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2G is a resolution to authorize contracts with Cap Financial Partners LLC, doing business as Cap Trust Financial Advisors, to provide investment advisory services for retirement plans of the City University of New York, approved by the Investment Subcommittee at its meeting November 14, 2022. In 2014, the Board of Trustees established an investment policy statement establishing, among other things, guidelines for the university's management of the City of New York Optional Retirement Program and the City University Tax Affair Annuity Plan. In accordance with the guidelines established under the investment policy statement, the university utilizes an investment advisor to provide guidance and advisement on the selection, monitoring, termination, and investment options offered by the plans. The investment advisor provides guidance on current industry best practices and reviews fees associated with the administration of the plans. University's current contracts for these services expired in January of this year, and on February 7, 2022, the university issued an RFP to procure these services. Five firms responded and were evaluated by a committee comprised of central office personnel who selected Cap Financial Partners LLC, doing business as Cap Trust Financial Advisors, as the most responsive firm to enter into contract with the university to provide the services required under the RFP. Accordingly, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 2G.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item?
I just want to make a comment. I want to acknowledge the Chancellor and Hector, Executive Vice Chancellor, for this work. This is the kind of work, financial advisements for retirees and all of the financial discussion, is one of the things that we promote in this city as a best practice. So, thank you for being a part of that, because you are such a main institution. So I want to just acknowledge that work.
Thank you, trustee. Any other comments? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Item number three, the Committee on Education Policy, let me call on Committee on Education Policy Vice Chair Henry Berger to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Education Policy considered the following matters at its meeting on January 23, 2023, which I will now present to the Board. Policy item 3A is a resolution to establish seamless transfer credit within the same academic major at the City University of New York. A large number of students within CUNY transfer among its undergraduate colleges, making it essential that the university facilitates smooth and efficient transfer within the system to ensure timely degree progression. We ask that the Board of Trustees authorize the Chancellor and his designees to make recommendations to the Board of Trustees on changes to policies and procedures and degree alignment at the university to enable seamless transfer within a major across colleges. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A for Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Discussion on this item?
I just want to thank the Chancellor. This was an ongoing problem with the comprehensives for colleges Staten Island, Medgar Edwards Lehman, and this will make a seamless transition. So thank you very much for solving that.
Any other comments? I'd also would like to thank the Chancellor and his team for moving forward on this, as well as, let me thank my colleagues, and all of you, for highlighting this issue and making this a priority for all of us. So this is really, you know, all of us working together to move in a direction. It exemplifies the best of what we can all do when we work together. So with that, any other comments? All right, let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3B is a resolution to amend the Hunter College Charter of Governance. The proposed amendments to the Hunter College Charter include adding a second faculty alternate, abolishing the evening council, and changing the composition of the Senate Administrative Committee. These changes have been approved by the college's governance body, the college senate, and they are recommended by the college president. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3B for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy item 3C is a resolution to establish a program in fashion and design leading to the Bachelor of Arts degree at Queens College. The proposed program will serve the university's mission to prepare its diverse population of students for the future of work in fashion, allowing them to develop the necessary skills for academic and professional advancement in this diverse field, which currently has significant career opportunities in both traditional fashion design as well as costume construction for film and television while ensuring equity and access to this vital professional field. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3C for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy items 3D1 and 3D2 are resolutions to award immediate tenure with the application of bylaws 6.2.2B to Omrana Pasha Razak at the Department of Community Health and Social Medicine at the Community School of Medicine, and to Colette Brown in the Department of Health Equity Administration and Technology at Lehman College. Mr. Chairman, I present items 3D1 and 3D2 for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Policy items 3E1 through 3E17, and we'll consider them as a group. These are resolutions to award early tenure with the application of bylaw 6.2.2C2 as follows. Peru College, Rubia Valente in Public Policy, Andrew Obus in Mathematics. City College, Alessandra Cardiero, Biomedical Engineering. Graduate Center, Wei Wang, Psychology, and Kyle Gorman, Linguistics. Hunter College, Keith Chan at the Silverman School of Social Work, Yakov Klotz, Classical and Oriental Studies, and Laura Wolf-Powers, Urban Policy and Planning. At Lehman College, Natasha Nurse Clark in Nursing, and Sean Stein Smith in Accounting. Queens College, Chloe Bass, Art, Tanya Dinkin in History, Bree Allen Hopper in English, Hillary Miller in English, Mohamed Alimiri in Physics, Jay Shuttleworth, Secondary Education and Youth Services, and Hongwei Shu in Sociology. Mr. Chairman, I present items 3E1 through 3E17 for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for these items?
Second.
Any discussion on these items? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Policy item 3F is a resolution requesting the approval of the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Educational Policy Committee. The related Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee was generated in summary format from faculty data entered by the campuses into CUNY First, the university's system of record, between October 22, 2022 and December 2022. The information contained in this report includes appointments and reappointments with tenure and fellowship leaves. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3F for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy item 3G is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the curriculum and academic policy dashboard. Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Education Policy in summary form. The dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with the summary data. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3G for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Item number four, the Committee on Advancement and External Affairs, let me now call on Committee on Advancement and External Affairs Chair Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Committee on Advancement and External Affairs considered the following matters at its meeting on January 23, 2023, which I now present to you. Item 4A is the resolution requesting the naming of the Con Edison Endowment Scholarship Fund at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4B is the resolution requesting the naming of the Con Edison Endowment Scholarship Fund at Medgar Edwards College.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4C is a resolution requesting the naming of the Susan Gardner 63 Faculty Office, Class of 63 Faculty Office on the fifth floor of the Leon and Toby Cooperman Library at Hunter College.
This item's been moved. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Thank you. Item 4D is the resolution requesting the naming of the George Brogan Constitutional Policy. Policies, Policing Scholarship Endowment Fund at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4T for board's consideration.
Do I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4E is a resolution requesting the naming of the Leonard A. Louder Exhibition and Catalogue Fund at Hunter College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4E at the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any questions? Any discussion? All right, we'll now move the item. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We want to make a comment that the Committee on Advancement will be doing a review of some of the old, the policies and scholarship policies and naming. The naming rights, not as much, but a review of all of our guidelines and policies and memorandums of affreeman as a good practice.
Let me thank you for leading that effort. Thank you so much.
Well, thank also Vice Chancellor, whatever.
Let me thank you both.
Sandra Wilkins. Mr. Chairman, I gave her a title, whatever. Vice Chair. Strike that from the record. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item five, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Let me now call on Committee for Facilities Planning and Management Chair Brian Oberfeld to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered the following matters at its meeting on January 23rd, 2023, which I now present to the board. Item 5A, resolution to authorize interior upgrades of Performing Arts Center at York College. The York PAC interior upgrades project's scope includes new theater seating, upgraded autovisual system, theoretical equipment, theoretical lighting system, and relevant IT upgrades for both the small and large theaters. There will also be aesthetic and practical upgrades to the theater main lobby, restrooms, elevators, and entrances outlined in the resolution. This project will address a number of deferred maintenance issues in the York PAC and will bring 34,456 square feet of space into a state of good repair. Construction managed by DASNY is anticipated to commence upon board approval and be substantially completed by July 2024. The board requests CUCF to provide capital funding in an amount up to $19 million, $400,000. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the item?
I just like, Chairman, just to duly note that the program management agreement to DASNY will comply and report on the applicable MWBE and SDVOB goals for CUNY.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Okay. Item 5B, resolution to authorize Phase II renovations to the 217 Lexington Avenue Building at Baruch College. The Baruch 17 Lex Phase II renovation project includes the renovation of the remainder of the ground floor, including new ADA toilet facilities, new ADA 23rd Street entrance, and renovated lobby, renovated box office, new multipurpose space, new ADA elevator to Mason Hall balcony and basement, and improvements to the alleyways. This project will address a number of deferred maintenance issues and will bring 25,475 square feet of space into a state of good repair. Construction managed by DASNY is anticipated to commence upon board approval and be substantially completed by November 2024. The board requests CUCF to provide capital funding in an amount up to $30 million, $100,000. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second. Gladly. It was a disgrace years ago when I walked in it as a graduate student.
Wow. All right. Any other discussion on this item? We will now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Okay. Item 5C, resolution to authorize a lease amendment with 8080 LW LLC as landlord at 39-07 Prince Street, Flushing, New York, to expand the lease premises for Queensborough Community College. The university has leased space at 39-07 Prince Street since 2002 for both its credit-bearing and continuing education department programs, and has provided Citizenship Now immigration service to the, services to the community. These programs have continued to grow in recent years. The university desires to enter into a second amendment of the existing lease that would extend the lease at $48, pardon me, at $48 per rentable square foot from September 1st, 2023, expiring August 31st, 2033. The lease will be registered with Queensborough Community College as the main user group, utilizing approximately 8,400 rentable square feet, with remaining approximately 1,600 rentable square feet to continue to be used by Citizenship Now. This resolution will authorize the General Counsel to execute the lease amendment and states that any further changes will be submitted for board approval. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. There being no further business, I ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you all so much.
That's very cool.